All right, so this is the May 25th, 21 meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Richards, Chair, staff tonight, Diane Glenbosky and Deb Jones. We do have the opportunity for the public to address the commission under Public Communications. You'll need to raise your hand on an Apple device. You can find that on top of your screen on a PC. It's at the bottom. If you're on a phone, it's star nine.
All right, so I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. It looks like all our members and alternates are in attendance tonight. So we obviously have a quorum. Next item is approval of minutes of previous meetings, which we have the minutes of. May 15th meeting, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second? Oh, second. Does anyone have any corrections?
I had something. Just a quick little page five at the top, complete street draft policy. It just says the town is asking for input from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just, we could just be a little more specific as to who that is. I think it's the Town Council.
It is the Town Council.
Actually, you got two page numbers on these things.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Gets confused.
Yeah.
Huh?
One, I think, is a packet number. The other is the page number of the minutes. Yeah.
Yeah, it gets assigned if it's part of.
Either five or seven.
Yeah. Page five of the minutes.
That's it.
Does anyone have anything else? I had a couple of editorial items on page three of the minutes on the last paragraph. Page. Done with a. Let me see how many lines down, about three quarters of the way down. If you look on the left-hand side of the paragraph that starts with spaces for the Emporium Building. It looks like they left the word of got left out that down toward the end. Where it says, there will be an addition for more spaces. I think it should's addition of four more. And the fourth line after that, that starts off on the left side by way of the second easement. It said, the next sentence says, there are a couple laundry bins. I would think it might be simpler to just say there are our laundry bins stored and get rid of a couple. Otherwise, you'd have to insert of. That's all I had. If no one has anything else, then we'll. Does anyone have anything else? If not, we'll vote on approval of the minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to Public Communications, does then anyone on the commission have any communications to identify?
No.
I had received one from Betty, Betsy McCauser. From Beth Tillman, I assume that you got that, Deb, and we'll forward it.
Yes, yeah, that's right. That's right. We've actually received three this week that we'll get forwarded to you at the end of the week. And last week, I think there was just one.
Well, usually I go to the, your office, but this one, when they come to Betsy, she for a couple of times, they're sent to her and addressed to me directly. I just want to make sure.
Yep, we have it.
Okay, and she also, wow, I'll bring it on. She also sent me some other stuff, but I'll bring that up under later on because it doesn't affect our business at this time. Does staff have any communications?
No.
Is anyone in the public wish to address us tonight?
Yep, we have a couple of hands up. I'm just going to pick them in order the way I see them here on the screen. Um, let's see, first is Beth Tillman.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nice to be here. Nice to see you all hard at work. Thank you for all your service to the town. I did send an email and last time you had gotten my email in time for the meeting. So I will indicate once again that I was writing you with concerns about the proposed mega development of the Mystic Oral School property. I am one of the insignificant taxpayers in this community of Groton who invested in this community some 40 years ago. I, we have played by the rules, adhered to zoning regulations, and adhered to ordinances for orderly governments of this town. If I were to request a change in my zoning as an insignificant taxpayer, would the town provide me with a videographer at town cost to support me in my endeavor? Would the town hire a consultant to create zoning changes just for me? And I believe that the changes, it is, it is, there's a lot of misinformation about what the actual zoning and floating zone can do. But it is my understanding that if there is a change to a floating zone, then it's called spot zoning, which is illegal. There's also another situation called contract zoning where that too is an illegal situation. I realize it's common in these situations to employ that, but I'm not so sure it's always legal. And where was the planning in the oral school development? The planning department is charged with enhancing, enhancing the character and the quality of the town's neighborhoods and preserving opportunities for healthy and sustainable environments that contribute to a high quality of life for all people who live, work, and visit Groton. No planning has appeared to be done for this. Where are the workshops that were used to plan for the development of the oral school? Where was the community given a chance to give input into the proposed development before an announcement was made? The only documents I found dating from 2016 were the only ones I could find that even touched on the oral scale. And they indicated the potential for mixed use, elder housing, school, offices, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But in that same document, it indicates that the infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, electrical are inadequate to support much of a change from the RU-80 zoning on the property. It also indicated that the preservation of the Route One corridor was paramount. And nothing should go into the oral school, which would detract from the Route One corridor. The plan being drawn up is to overthrow the zoning currently in place on the oral school. I consider it to be a cram down. Elected officials and staff signed contracts, signed agreements while promoting a cram down. Anyone who objects to the size, density, overcrowding, irrevocable change to the fabric of Groton as a community is called a nimby. The term nimby is derogatory and degrading. My backyard is all of Groton. Taxpayers are to be part of the process, not cast overboard when trying to prevent Groton from a very costly mistake. I ask consideration as a taxpayer, as a little cog in the wheel of Groton for respect from those who have been elected and appointed to serve the taxpayers whose vision of and for the town needs to be given paramount importance in this process, not a developer from New York. I would hope that you, as the body which is charged with the deliberation of zoning changes, will be fair and equitable in your handling of this difficult process. And we are well aware, I think, the public, how difficult this process is going to be. And I tried to raise my hand while you were approving the minutes to indicate that my name is not Melinda. The name which was misunderstood is Wanda. My legal name is Wanda. The Wanda E. Tillman, 925 River Road, the Groton side of the Mystic Postal address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we are sorry about your name.
That's okay.
All right, let's see, Roseanne Kowalski.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. And first, I just want to say I agree with everything that Beth Tillman just said, especially the part about there was no community involvement in the planning for the Mystic Oral School mega development project. Okay? And that's just a fact. But here's my comments. At the end of the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Commissioner Fiftill, I hope I said his name right, asked some questions regarding the Mystic Oral School mega development project. I appreciate his questions and the planning and zoning discussion that followed. Commissioner Tarbox suggested that people that left the meeting would benefit from the conversation. I want her to know that many of us did. It was mentioned at the Town Council meeting last week that the Planning and Zoning Commission was planning another workshop regarding the Mystic Oral School property regulations rewrite. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission's workshop is a good idea to help people to understand the Planning and Zoning Commission process. Imagine, neighbor of the Mystic Oral School property and just this last year discovered that a mega development, including 931 units, a 50-room hotel, eight-story parking garage, and bus terminal is planned in your neighborhood. The neighbors have questions and to date, there are no answers. It will be important to include in the workshop the reasons why the town is in this situation. Let's be honest, it is because the quote typical process, as John Burke likes to call it, was not followed by Town of Groton staff. As we know, Town of Groton staff prematurely entered into a development agreement with a quote preferred developer before the regulations were written for the property, not the quote typical process. It is my hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission will take control of the situation and complete the planning and zoning process and write the regulations for the property without developer influence and interference, as should be the case for any regulation rewrite. One last point. I have brought to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission many times that the January 15th, 2021 Horsey Witten document, which is the draft of the regulations for the Mystic Oral School property rewrite, contains comments, suggestions, and questions from the developer. At the workshop, could someone please explain why the taxpayers are paying for a regulation rewrite with the developer comments, suggestions, and questions included? I am looking forward to the workshop. However, I believe it is important that the workshop be run by the Planning and Zoning Commission and not staff. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Scott Westervelt.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, excellent. Um, I'll keep this brief. I've just got a couple of comments, but I'd like to now, one of the things that Ms. Tillman had said, and that is that there shouldn't be a development that is going to be, well, I'm sorry, I'm going to paraphrase here, in direct competition with the Route One and the merchants down on Route One. Now, if the zoning were to stay at RU-80 up at the Mystic Oral School, would that allow for competitive, like a competitive marketplace to the downtown merchants? If it does, and I think that that is clearly shown to be, you know, not in keeping with, with the way the regulations were written. So I guess that's really one of my main questions. I'd like to let everyone know that I do agree with Ms. Tillman. I agree with Roseanne Kowalski. There needs to be more openness with this. And I look forward to participating in a workshop where we can come together with a, a list of questions and we can procedurally make our way through it so that we have a good understanding for what is expected. Again, I'll say I am in opposition to the 931 unit development that they are proposing. It doesn't fit, and it seems to go against everything that for zoning regulations and your charter was written for. So thank you very much. I appreciate all that you do. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, Catherine Pratt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, okay, my name is Catherine Pratt, and I live at 75 Front Street in Noack. Chair Pritchard and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I again respectfully urge you to reject the proposal by Raspeler Homes to rezone the site of the former Mystic Oral School to make it available for 931 apartments, a 500-car parking garage, and commercial businesses, including a possible hotel. This massive development with suggested building heights of up to 120 feet in a rural area surrounded by irreplaceable scenic beauty would be a grave mistake. Not only would there be sad consequences for a peaceful neighborhood with the designated scenic river road, the Mystic River, in the state and town-owned open space parcels abutting the developable property, which create a continuous greenbelt length of some 101 acres of pristine land, will be in peril if this project is allowed to proceed. Together, these natural areas comprise one of Connecticut's treasures. They should be protected, not spoiled by urban runoff, noise and light pollution, high-rise buildings creating public eyesores, and the impact of 2,000 additional residents. The developers' promotional materials are rife with red flags indicating a lack of sensitivity to the value of these precious areas and an aggressive desire to draw surrounding land into the project. For example, the Mystic River Bluffs website states, quote, "The lower eastern 37-acre portion of the property will remain open space and will be deeded to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in a conservation easement," unquote. This is, this is extremely misleading. The 37 acres at issue are a portion of the 77-acre 240 Oral School parcel, but they have been protected open space ever since they and other oral school lands were acquired by DEEP in or about November 2010, when the state initiated the process for declaring portions of the oral school as surplus property. They are specifically excluded from the purchase and sale agreement between the State of Connecticut and Raspeler Homes, which states, quote, "Seller shall retain the Connecticut DEEP land and sell to purchaser only the remaining portion of the 240 Oral School parcel, comprising approximately 39.81 acres in the Zero Oral School parcel," unquote. Since Zero Oral School Road is approximately eight acres, the total number of acres being contemplated for transfer is 48, not 85, the figure given on Raspeler's website, which would misleadingly include the 37-acre DEEP tract. To be clear, the easterly 37-acre open space portion of 240 Oral School Road is not in the contract and is not part of the potential sale. Raspeler's website also states, quote, "The property entrance is located less than a quarter mile from exit 89 off I-95 and has direct frontage on the Mystic River estuary," unquote. Based on the purchase and sale agreement, no waterfront on the Mystic River is being conveyed in this transaction. Is there a separate agreement between the developer and the state of which the public is unaware? Given the lack of transparency that has pervaded this entire process, it seems a fair question. In the absence of such an agreement, any claim that the Mystic River Bluffs development includes any state-owned land with frontage on the Mystic River, such as the DE, such as the DEEP parcel on the west bank of the river, north of the Mystic River boat launch, or otherwise, is false. Let us not be deceived. These confusing, ambiguous, and inaccurate statements strongly suggest that if this project is approved, the portion of 240 Oral School Road acquired by DEEP in 2010 is at risk of being exploited for the benefit of Jeffrey Raspeler and Mystic River Bluffs. Amenities for passive recreation, such as walking trails and an improved public water access area would be desirable, but they must be properly authorized by DEEP. Any unauthorized use of these 37 acres of open space and watershed protection land could jeopardize the integrity and interconnection of the entire Greater 101-Acre Green Belt Link, which also includes 40 acres of town-owned conservation land acquired in 1989 with proceeds from a municipal open space bond and 24 acres of state-owned conservation land at 414 Oral School Road acquired by DEEP in or about 2010. In an inexplicably, Groton officials remain committed to an out-of-state developer with a serious criminal record, who will acquire 48 acres of valuable state land for a dollar and cause the town catastrophe using taxpayers' money. Perhaps this dire situation could have been avoided if the Planning and Zoning Commission had been kept in the loop from the start to provide a check and balance. Clearly, the town process for implementing the goals of economic growth flouts the normal rules that govern land development and zoning, is badly broken, and must be thoroughly reviewed. Meanwhile, the Raspeler project should be ended by whatever means are left at our disposal and preferred alternatives pursued that satisfy the many valid objections the oral school neighbors and outraged citizens have raised. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see. Becca Welt. Becca Welt.
Sorry, I double muted myself again. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I think I can hear.
Okay, sorry about that every time. Um, I'm Becca Welt from 32 Boulder Court in Mystic, and I don't have any inspirational speeches this time around, and I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to remind you that the proposed development for the oral school is completely inappropriate and ask you to do all in your power to keep things reasonably sized for our quiet neighborhood and narrow roads. I have faith in you. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, that's it.
That's, oh, okay, we can return to our business. So our first item is a site plan, SIT 2109 Mystic Parking LLC, 1 Pearl Street.
Yes, I am promoting the applicants. And I think there's one. Not sure, there's Susan. Okay. Okay, all right, so I believe Bob Shook is here along with Susan Mattern and Leo Roche to present the application.
So the applicant would like to make his present or their presentation?
Bob, you're muted.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay. Sue, did you want to start off or?
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure, okay. I'm Bob Shook, professional engineer. Uh, and I was designed, worked for Mystic Parking LLC for this project. Also is Susan Mattern. She's the land surveyor. She was gonna start it off, but I can, I can take it. Now, can I, oh, there's Sue.
I can start.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Susan Mattern, Lexington Land Surveyor with DGT Associates, located at 148 Route 2 in Preston, Connecticut. And Bob Shook has already introduced himself. He is a professional engineer associated with this project. We're presenting an application for a site plan of the Town of Groton zoning regulations for property located at 1 Pearl Street in Mystic. The owner of record is Rabbit Cam LLC. And the site is located in the Mystic Design District, and it's .26 acres. The existing use is a two-story wood frame house with one residence per floor. And there also was a former parking lot on the property that served the Bank of America at one time with access from Bank Street. The aerial photograph that you have in some of your package depicts the area. And the proposed use is to modify an existing structure in accordance with plans presented and approved by the Historic District Commission. The plans were prepared by John Patrick Walsh, architect of Architectural Design LLC. And we also want to create slash restore the much-needed public parking area on the site. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Bob because he's going to talk about the engineering aspect of it. And I will be here with any supporting documentation to help him out on that. Welcome, Bob.
Thanks, Sue. Deb, I can share the screen, right? I'll just grab it. I think you're, you're muted.
Yep, you're right. Yes, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Okay, can every, oh. Can everybody see this?
Nope.
Oh.
Oh, all right. Well, I guess we.
There we go.
Can you see it now?
Yeah, I can't see it, but it looks like it's.
It's starting.
Starting anyway. Um, it's a black screen, Bob.
Okay.
But it says you're sharing.
Let me just try that one more time. Oh, it's just. Sharing is paused. Okay. Okay, now you can see it, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, as Sue indicated, Pearl Street is right here. This is an existing two-story, two-family building. It has a stamped concrete parking lot that services the tenants in that building. Uh, this was an old parking lot that was utilized by the Bank of America, I think, right? Uh, when they, when they went out, this, this parking area, this is all asphalt pavement. Uh, this has basically been vacant since the bank went out. Uh, so if I could just go to the next. Okay. Can everybody see that one?
They haven't selected the next chart.
Okay, let me see. Sharing is paused.
Might have to minimize this one, Bob.
Now we got the new one.
Is that coming in now?
Yes.
This is sheet two. I don't see the.
Yes.
I don't see the square around it. Usually, there's a green square around it. Uh, so everybody can see this?
Comes up, right?
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the proposal involves making this a one-way entrance and to come around with a new driveway that curls around the house and comes back out onto Pearl Street. Uh, once a driver comes in, he's opened up to a parking lot in the rear. That's going to be all one big parking surface. There'll be, there'll be two tenant spaces on this side, two tenant spaces on this side to service the, the two-family house, the four required parking spaces for the, for the tenants. Uh, we'll have a handicap space, which is for regular car, and then a ADA accessible van space as close as we could to the roadway. Uh, so if, you know, people come down and park in this here, they can just, they'll have to just walk down the driveway to access, you know, the sidewalk on Pearl Street. This driveway is at a slope that is ADA accessible, incidentally, so. Uh, and then the rest of it will be, um, you know, there'll be total of nine spaces here in addition to the two for the tenants. And what we've done is we put a crosshairs area there, so if somebody pulls in, they can turn in and do a three-point turn back out if, if there's no spaces available. Uh, we have added some landscaped islands on the, on the back left corner or the back southeastern corner, uh, and also on the northwestern corner. and also on the northwestern corner. I'm sorry, that's, that's southwestern corner and the northwestern corner. This area is presently just dirt right now. What we're proposing is to, to bring power to the back, leave that as crushed stone and have wheel stops in there to promote stormwater infiltration rather than, you know, make it impervious if the wheels can't get past the wheel stops anyway to get power to the lights. There'll be three lights, a light here, a light right here, and then a light on the corner here. I should have made my pointer a little bit different color so you can see that, but. So we'll also have a bike rack here that would meet the requirements for the two required for this amount of parking spaces. But this, this parking rack will accommodate five bicycles, and we position it so it's, it's easily accessible to Pearl Street. I forgot to mention, but there will be, in order to get a driveway in that's going to be 12 feet wide that was required by the fire marshal, we have to basically remove a portion of the house and this concrete area and steps that's along the north side of the house. Cut that back about eight feet and redesign the side of the house. And that has, Sue indicated, it has obtained AC approval. So that portion will be eliminated. This will be stamped concrete, as I indicated, well, it is stamped concrete. And of course, the, the house will be modified a little bit to being accessed to both apartments with a, with a larger deck than that's there now. There'll be painted corners to, on both sides to accommodate, to accommodate fire apparatus as required by the fire marshal. That's what they wanted, rather than having an island that's sticked out, stuck out. They preferred to either have a mottable curb or a paint-hatched area to allow for turning movements. If anybody has any questions, I'm not sure how you, how I see anybody raising their hand, but if you want to, let me know if they should stop.
Go ahead and finish your presentation, Bob, and then the chair will call on folks.
Okay, all right, thank you. So as far, so as I indicated, this will be the exit out. They'll have a new curb cut here, and they'll be having the granite, flush granite curbing on both sides with the radius and sidewalk ramps to, to make the one inch per foot up to match the existing sidewalk in that area. As far as, well, there's also steps here on the existing porch. Those will be removed and new steps will be brought onto this side to allow access to the porch. And they'll put, we'll have bollards at this location to protect motorists from hitting, you know, the side of the building. Also, in this area here in the back corner, as well as the front corners, just because, you know, there's, there's not really too much room when we maintain 12 feet for access. As far as drainage goes, as I indicated, we'd like to leave this crushed stone to accommodate stormwater infiltration. This area in the back right now, all drains to an existing catch basin that's, that has a dry well in it. And there's also a yard drain in the back that actually, we understand flows into that area. That dry well has been acting efficiently. The applicant was out there during some rainstorms, and it's, it's performed well. There's no flooding or such, but we do have a stipulation that it will be maintained, you know, vacuumed out if there's, you know, sticks and, you know, leaves and debris in it, you know, at least once a year to maintain the efficiency of the, the stormwater infiltration that is conveying. The new parking area, this is all going to be new pavement in this area here, and also, of course, the new driveway. So what we've done, we've designed it to flow to the south, and in this area will be a, a three-foot, 30-foot-long, three-foot-wide, foot-and-a-half-deep crushed stone infiltration trench that will allow stormwater to just infiltrate back into the ground and do groundwater recharge. And, you know, for groundwater quality, stormwater runoff, stormwater quality purposes. As far as the water, stormwater that could come down the driveway, we've done essentially the same thing. We've, we've put a track drain in that's called out here, ADS, 12-inch perforated pipe underneath with six feet of stone bed that would basically collect whatever stormwater is accumulates down this driveway. So it doesn't, you know, go across the sidewalk and, and create a, you know, icing condition in the, in the winter or, or do, you know, add to any stormwater that's in the gutter line on, on the west side of Pearl Street. The applicant has proposed to put a kiosk in. The thought at this time is to possibly do something where they could take a ticket or, you know, go up to the, the kiosk and, and type in your phone, your phone number, your license plate where the, you know, we could charge a fee for, you know, parking by the hour. However, this isn't really defined in stone. We, we added it there just to show that, you know, it's a possibility if he makes, you know, has, gets a contract with a local business or, you know, the nearby, you know, future brewery or, or whatever. You know, that's certainly his, his business, you know, to, to do. The house will still remain a two-family. I think that's pretty much it. We have added four trees in the landscape down here, here, the back, the northwestern corner and the south, the southwestern corner as well. But it was very tight in terms of providing an 18-foot-long parking space, a 19-foot-long accessway, and then an 18-foot-long parking space on the other side. It's, we're basically right up to the property line. I think that's it. Oh, there is, in this area, there's a small retaining wall on the southeastern corner of the property, and I have a photo that I may be able to. See if I can. Anybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so, so this is the entrance where the entrance drive will be. I'm sorry, the exit drive. And this is a small retaining wall that's, that lifts up. There's a little set of stairs over to the right of the property line. Actually, you can't really see it. Okay, can you see this one?
Yes.
So there's the property corner.
The stake is the property line.
Yeah, property line. And it goes, it goes right down there. This, this retaining wall, which isn't very high, it's, you know, a foot and a half or so, goes into where that fence is. So there is a little bit of retaining wall there that may be over the line. So our intent to that is, just go back to the site plan again. Is, again, we're down in this area here. If you notice. So. So this is where we're talking. As you can see, the existing grade is like five at the, on the sidewalk. And then you go into the property, and there's, this is where the retaining wall is, where the six-foot contour goes up. And then it's about seven, there's a seven contour here. So this is, is probably about two feet higher than the actual sidewalk. So with our design, we're going to come in gradually at a, I believe, a 3% slope. So as you can see, the sixth contour is going to be in this area. So it's going to come in basically gradually, even with that, with that grade, maybe a little bit lower than the top of the retaining wall. So our intent is to, to keep the wall there itself, but excavate out behind it. So this will act as, similar to like a curb that would be sticking up to protect drivers coming down from, from hitting the house or, or that drainage pipe that they have, or actually the electrical meters that are, that are in this corner. It'll act as a, as a, you know, sort of a guardrail, almost, so to speak. But that was our intent. As you can see, this is the proposed seven, and then this is the existing seven. So it's, you know, even cut down below, below that grade, but it'll come in gradually rather than, you know, the retaining wall that's there now. So I, I think. I think that's pretty, pretty much all I, all I have to say. I mean, we have details that are on, you know, detail sheets of anything. You know, all the construction aspects of it.
So complete your.
Yeah, I think that's, that's all unless, you know, anybody has any question.
Well, we turn it over to staff, and then we open it up to the commission. There's any questions they have. So does the staff like to make their presentation?
Or I'll add just a couple of things to the presentation here. I think Bob covered most of the development issues. So this is an existing parking lot that has not been available to public, the public, for public use since the bank closed, as you had noted. So this, this proposal will allow additional parking, either for employees of existing businesses, which will free up some other spots for other people to park, or as a paid parking lot. I don't think the owner has decided yet. The, the lighting plan that was included in your packet, there was a photometric plan. All the fixtures are full cutoff, and light will not be bleeding over the property lines. There's residential uses to the north, although it's still in the MDD zone, and a small fence is proposed along that property line to limit Blair from headlights onto those properties. The, the new driveway does meet the zoning regulations with regards to distance to an adjacent intersection. It's a little bit over 50 feet, and the requirement is that it has to be 50 feet. And the last thing I want to note is that the new driveway aprons will match the streetscape design. The streetscape goes up to this northern property line. So, so we wanted it to, we didn't want just a concrete apron there. We wanted it to reflect the work that had been done a couple of years ago on the streetscape. With that, if you guys have any questions?
Can I just add just two items?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to also state that there were, there are two building-mounted lights that will go on the front of the existing house because there is no space, but we wanted to light it, and that will also be full cutoff lighting. There's, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but there's one right here. And then the other one, I think, is actually under this line, in this area. So just to be able to see where, see where you're going at night. And also on the front of the house, it'll be one of those P parking signs that you see, like in a city where there's a parking garage or something, just to advertise that there's parking there. Public parking. That's it.
All right. So I'll open it up to the commission for their questions. We'll start with you, Michael Kane.
Here I am. So I'll, I'll, I have a few questions. Let me just, I'll just say what my question, I'll just read them, and then maybe we can address them all. I guess my biggest concern is the visibility. If you're making a left-hand turn onto Pearl Street, or even a probably more a left-hand turn there, it seems like you're going to have to pull pretty far out onto the sidewalk before you're going to see oncoming traffic. How we can address that? And is there pedestrian access to what is Mystic Pizza? Will someone be able to walk from the parking lot? Is that going to be opened up? Trash for the tenants? I'd like to see where that is. Like, a little difficult to see it right now. And then at that electric meter that you're showing at the exit, I don't see a bollard there, and it looks like it's really close. Are we just assuming that that wall is going to act as, keep people, when they're making that right-hand turn, not clipping that meter? But it looks pretty close to me. That's all my questions.
The applicant like to respond, or do you want to respond after everybody else has spoken? Probably be good if the applicant could respond to, to those questions.
Bob, or I, well, we can certainly add the bollard at the corner. As far as access to Mystic Pizza.
That would really be.
There's an existing chain-link fence that's not on our property that actually you cannot walk to Mystic Pizza, so we really have no control over that. That's along the southerly property line where the parking spaces are shown.
Yeah. Just see, I know that Mystic Pizza's been, that property's been very difficult for parking in the last year, almost impossible. And I would hate to see people jumping over the fence in order to, if that's where they're going, you're not going to. But I don't know. Anyway, it was just a question. You can't open it up, then try.
Well, if the.
Ash for the tenants and that left-hand turn on Pearl Street. Oh, that can be, looks very, very tight.
We can certainly revisit that just to check what it is, if, you know, if it, I don't know, Bob, if you had determined that at all. Let me just scale it right now and see where 10 feet off it, three and a half.
I know that's a very busy sidewalk.
Yeah, you may just be able to sneak beyond the corner of the house. The other option is to say right-hand turn only.
That the driver's seat, or is that the front of the car that you're looking at? When you measure that?
The distance from the edge of pavement back.
I'm not going to, this is. Yeah, the distance back.
10 feet off the edge of the pavement.
Yeah, this is seven feet here. It's about 10 feet, so there, there will be about 10. Yeah, that thing's going to be an issue.
Are those curved mirrors that people put up sometimes? I hate them, and I don't think they work very well, but is that, do they actually, I don't know if staff thinks that they work.
As you, the driver would be cut, can everybody see this?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the driver would be coming out here. Okay, yeah, the driver would be coming out here. And coming out, yeah, the road curves a little bit. Yeah, the only thing in our favor is really the parking, you know, the speed limit that's that people are driving because they're coming to a. A stop sign at Pearl Street in fifty feet. But yeah, I mean, if there was a. One of those those mirrors, but I'm not sure how, I mean, it would almost have to be on this side of the street. So. It's reflective, but I don't know how effective that would be. I mean, people don't. I mean, I've never, I never really look at those myself. I don't know if anybody else does. Could also, you know, have a traffic control sign sheet blind drive, blind, you know, blind driveway further on. I mean, it's almost. It's almost similar to this fellow here. I mean, he's coming out. Right now, right now, the existing driveway comes out. And they can see, they can see a little bit, but you know, there's no parking. Right there, this fellow, this two way or one way.
If the, does it matter which direct, which one is entrance and which one is exit?
Yeah, it it does. Public Works recommended this design. So that you don't get people backed up on to West Main Street trying to make a left hand turn into the parking lot.
Yeah, just seems like, I know that sidewalk gets very crowded. You know, that's like a real busy. For some reason, a lot of people stand around there. And then if a car pulls out onto the sidewalk to see. And then now you're stopping pedestrians who are trying to walk around cars.
I think when you have a historic district like this. Those are the kind of. Issues unfortunately that we have to deal with.
I mean, it's almost like the, you know, if a car is stopped here, I mean. This guy can't really even pull out and maybe there's two cars. It's visually deceiving the distance that. Is on this thing. But I mean, if it's fifty feet from the corner, from that curb. To the center line of this drive, I mean, you know, that's probably crosswalk and everything is probably another fifteen fifteen feet or so. But I would think that, you know, that the speed limit would be such that, you know, cars aren't, you know, going to be. You know, going fast here, they're coming to a stop. It's a mandatory stop sign right there. So they're slowing down. And if this guy has to inch his nose out a little bit, I guess that's probably the best we could. We can do it, you know, we could certainly, you know, put a sign up as far as, you know, blind driveway or slow for. You know, incoming, oncoming traffic, but. The amount of cars that, you know, for twenty four spaces or twenty five.
My concern is more for the pedestrian.
Yeah, the pedestrians, I would think, like you said, it's a busy. It's a busy street, especially summertime.
Well, I don't, I don't want to hug that. Maybe other commissioners have have. Other questions that trash, that's the only other thing, the tenants trash, where's that stored? Right now, it's out on the street.
Yeah. That hey. I don't know, to be honest with you, you know, so.
Well, it's part of this proposal.
I'm sorry, what?
Is that part of this proposal?
What?
Resident trash.
Oh, well, it's going to be now. Well, I see, Bob, we could put it right there on the north side of the house. Just north of the proposed first floor deck. We could put it at a small area right there. Or at least cans. I I assume there's some garbage pickup.
Yeah, it's that plastic.
So they.
Yeah, there's an area, there's an area right here that we can, that we could put the recycle bin and the. Garbage space that would be convenient for them. People coming in, it's not like they're. You know, they're, they're going to be able to see once they come around the corner. Do we have do not enter signs? On both sides that drivers have traffic is going to be going down, but I would say that that would probably be the best place for the trash. It's not. In the area where, you know, if if, you know, people park. In the parking lot, obviously, they're going to walk down the driveway to to get to Pearl Street over here. Can't imagine going that way. So it would be away from. The public, public parking access, you know, if we we hide it over there, but that's, we can certainly add that to the plan that that's. Garbage receptacles location.
That's all for me. Thank you.
All right, hell.
I've got a few things. Actually, can, so I can point to it. Can you stop sharing and I'll share my version of this so I can use my point, my pointer? Thank you. I guess this one. Are you seeing this? Nope, sorry, moment. How's that?
Now it's coming up. Well. We don't have the vision. There's.
You see me now?
Yes.
All right, so. Yeah, I also had. Some deep concerns for that exit driveway. And we were saying about blocking the pedestrians, I'm thinking about running over the pedestrians. Because pedestrians are, I could trust off my screen here, you can't see it. Those pedestrians are walking north on that sidewalk. The first they'll know that a car is coming out is when it emerges from the driveway. I don't have a solution for that and signs don't do it. We already have that kind of situation, a couple driveways up, but that doesn't have. This anywhere near this many cars, there's a few cars coming out of that. It's a little private one. This, we expect a little bit of traffic, regular traffic in and out of. So frankly, I I I like this kind of flow, but. Cars coming out, they're going to stick their nose out and people are going to be walking by the building. At the exact same time, there's just no way, I don't know how to prevent that. When you see that in a city, sometimes there's lights flashing, there's a horn blowing going or a bell or something. Because it's such a bad situation, they move directly from a building. We don't have that in Mystic, so I don't have a solution for that and I certainly don't like it. I know this is what you came up with to try to to fix it, but I don't think that works. I ask you to, let me go through a couple more things on this. Here's a little one, the future kiosk that you have up here. It's on the wrong side. It's on the right side of the car. So back here where you're saying your trash could go, if you're going to put a kiosk, I suppose that's where it should go. Well, part of the problem is that when somebody pulls in, they're not going to, you're already trapped. By the time I get to the kiosk, if there's a gate or something like that. Unless the kiosk just, you know, give me some money and tell us. And leave a coupon in your car, I suppose that would allow you to exit if in fact they can't find a space. But that that one you can fix. Initially, there's this existing chain link, but when this, when this parking lot was working. It wasn't there. That was kind of added when. I suppose the the bank property turned over. I I thought it was when you guys closed and all, but it was. When the bank property turned over, whatever reason, that's when this fence showed up. Prior to that, there was no fence. And these spaces here. Which are already kind of tight. This curb was the wheel stop. I don't believe there was a a wheel stop in front of it. Which means that you you show three foot from here to there. I think you typically only take credit for about two foot of the space. So let me just go by that. So eighteen feet back with a two foot overhang, which means sixteen foot back. So instead of having nineteen feet here. In effect, at the worst point. It was more like twenty three feet at the worst point. It was already tight. It became kind of tolerable. It was really bad. But the first, the driveway was over here and so these three spaces. You kind of pulled directly in and kind of back straight out to get out because that was already, it was very tough to do this. But that was with twenty three feet between here. Now we're talking about at best twenty two feet. And getting down to nineteen feet to turn a design eighteen foot vehicle. I don't, I don't know any standard that says anything less than twenty four feet. That's the typical for eighteen foot spaces opposed eighteen foot spaces is twenty four feet. Could you trim it because it's existing, I suppose, but trimming it five feet, I don't know how to turn a car in there. It's like. Trying to turn a car inside your garage. When you can't even get to the edges. Carriages are bigger than nineteen feet often. Good luck with that. So if you came in here and said, well, we left this little space here. And that's going to allow you somehow to turn around. Well, not nineteen feet is not, not if every one of these spaces is full. I don't think this has a solution. I think as desperate as we are for parking. I think this would be an unusable parking lot for the most part, except for very small cars. So I I know where that came from, nineteen feet. It's just not a design parameter I I've ever seen anywhere. So if you can show me some kind of turning wings in this, but I don't know how to do a three point turn to go in and come back out in nineteen feet. I don't know how to do it in less than twenty three. So I'm afraid I I don't see how this this actually works. I think that's enough for me. I can't say I I I can't see approving this because I don't think it's it's feasible. And I'd love to see parking back there, but I also don't want to see a car trap.
Can I make a comment on that? You know, initially, when we first brought the plan in to have a preliminary discussion with planning. You know, we talked about that dimension and. You know, as far as proposing different kinds of parking or something. And we were encouraged to go with the ninety degree parking and not to be concerned with that dimension.
I don't know with the ninety degree parking, if you angled it, you'd still have the same problem. Because angled parking is only good if it's one, one, one way. Sure, with slots in there, but then you have to back all the way out. So that doesn't work either.
Well, can the applicant demonstrate how parking, how the backing out would work or how much space you need?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean typically on, you know, cars six feet wide, you know, maybe six and a half feet wide. So if he's coming down, actually, you can't see my screen, but if he's coming down, like you say, the north side of the aisle to turn in. You know, I think there's enough room to make to make that adjustment. And same thing with going out again, you know, we're not, we're probably not talking to twenty three foot long, you know, F three fifty or something. You know, and and maybe that would be possibly a stipulation that it's that is for. You know, small cars or. You know, no, no longer in a certain length, but I mean, the thing is, you know, from the distance from the property line on the north side to the south side. That's basically, you know, what was there eighteen about nineteen foot of width and then eighteen foot space. Originally, you know, we had thought about making, you know, since a lot of the cars nowadays are are actually smaller, again, except for, you know, the large. Large trucks and so forth, that we were making, that we were originally, I thought of making the spaces seventeen feet long and and possibly asking for some. You know, waiver of some sort in order to, you know, maintain a larger access with. But, you know, with with that, we we wanted to also comply with the, you know, the city or the town's. Minimum length and with requirements. I know, I know back a few years ago, you guys used to have. Or the town used to have a sixteen foot long space for compact cars that was reserved, but apparently that must have got taken out ways back.
Because you couldn't police it, so it never worked.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Frankly, you you might see, we routinely approve the sixteen foot space. That's because we allow two foot of overhang onto a curb. Here, there's none. This is, you're you're dimensioning it as we like to see it, the true dimension. But you're going right up to the fence with eighteen feet and tracking, you show it three foot here, so I'm not even sure that. Completely works there.
Well, you know.
Worked before because of cooperation with with the neighbor, which allowed for a little bit of extra room. Which would make this work, if in fact this extra paving. In fact, even trim it would come back here, which would certainly be a benefit. We say, you know, benefit to Mystic Pizza. We forget that. The bank building is also going to get some kind of other service in there and has no parking of its own except for one parking spot. So they need this too. So I just sees this as sort of an opportunity, a necessity to come up with some kind of other agreement to make this actually work. Because I don't think it does now. Not, there's nothing about nineteen feet. For the reason, these are eighteen feet is because it was decided that eighteen foot is a good average length for a car. Not a minute, you're right, not a tiny little car, but your average Honda Odyssey, a pickup, little pickup truck. You get pretty close to that once you bump into a curb. Or if you don't pull all the way in, which is pretty normal too. That's how we end up, that's why we have this number. So to say I can back up into nineteen feet. No, you can't. Not if somebody else is back here, back here, didn't pull completely way in. I I don't know how to maneuver to get back into it. And if there's, isn't any parking, I certainly don't know how many times I need to go back and forth to try to get back out of it.
If I might, so I'm just looking at this old aerial photograph and they pretty much show the. Parking on the bottom parallel as we have shown it.
Went all the way to the curb. That was the difference.
Yeah, but. I don't know if I have this minimized, but if you can see. That parking, the north and the south. Is parallel and the wheel stops. Are parallel, they're not at an angle on the south. Let me see if I can pull up the aerial photograph that I have minimized here.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't think angle works on anything like this. I think doing ninety degrees is is correct. It's absolutely appropriate if you're going to have to go straight in and straight out. But anything that they had before came all the way out to the curb, which was anywhere from two to five feet farther out.
But I don't, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if that was the case based on the aerial photograph. It appears to be that it's it's like we have it. I don't know if you can see my. Cursor at all, but.
I'm looking at Google Maps too, and it just looks like it goes out to the curb. There would be nothing else to go by because the fence wasn't there. The fence is just a light addition.
Can I share a photo that we can look at?
Yeah, you can once held up. You can, you can share now.
So. See how we haven't really changed this. And that fence. That. Actually now goes like this, like this. So this was not part of that parking. These are all lined up. These are all lined up. So I think that was always. That dimension. Between these painted lines.
No, no, there's no way, because the curb is there. Somewhere on here, there's a curb that's completely in shadow here, so you can't see it, but it went up to the curb. And you're showing it very nicely here that the curb is. I don't know, at least five feet back from your property line, which is what you're lining with now. So what you're looking at, you, you, what you're looking at here is an overlay, the white line there is the overlay of the lock line. But the actual ability to park was several feet. Beyond that. And has been for forever.
Yeah, I don't know. These, these look like the same.
I imagine you probably get out there and see it. I'm sorry, didn't go out there and take some pictures on site. I don't know if you have any pictures of the parking lot.
Let me see.
You have something? I parked my Honda Odyssey. Which is more than six foot wide. I think it's eighteen feet long into some of these back corner, those back corner spots. And kind of wish I hadn't when it was time to come back out of them because it was pretty tough. But I know I had more than one foot. To maneuver with. Typically, when you even trim like kind of dimension in the basement of a building, because there's concrete columns everywhere. You still won't go down to nineteen feet.
While Susan's looking for a photo, I just wanted to jump in and let you know what our thinking was on this. We have property owners who, who are at this point are not interested in. Cooperating with each other. And we have a large-ish for Mystic, a largest parking lot in a historic area. That we were hoping to get some reuse out of. In the past, there's a couple of plans where we've gone down narrow as eighteen feet for two-way traffic. In an aisle way. Which is one reason we thought nineteen might work here. I don't know whether or not the, the potential, the owner is on the call, but at one point he was thinking that. He would be leasing these stalls to employees of businesses in this. Something that he might have some control over in terms of the size of vehicles that park here. In a historic area, you know, you kind of work with what you have. I, I, I know you know.
And you can, I, I agree with eighteen feet when you. Very strongly angle the spaces. I forget what angle you have to go to. It's like, I know, probably thirty degrees. Before that works with an eighteen one-way driveway, because eighteen feet certainly doesn't make a two-way driveway. And this is a two-way driveway where you're supposed to be able to make a U-turn. So I, that doesn't work. I don't know how to make it work. As much as I desperately would love to this to work and be like, get those extra parking spaces in. But I don't see it. I just see it's being a car trap.
Are there any regulations or facts on this? Because to me, it looks like, I mean, it was always tight in there. But there was always plenty of room.
It was ruined because there was more room because it went up.
No, if you were down at the end, there wasn't much room.
If you went down to the end, it was better. You actually see the angle there. If you got down near the end.
Yeah, but I don't think I could park in that space. I think there were, that they had stops along there.
It didn't have his lot line. We never knew what the lot line was until that fence went in.
No, but I don't think you could get right up to the building. I think there was, they were stopped.
Not up to the building, up to the curb, which is listed here, B C L C, that's the curb. So you could continue up to it, which gave them an extra. So that's, that's an important five feet. If this was, five feet would have made it at least twenty-four at the end. Only three feet would have made it twenty-two. I probably would have thought, okay, I guess. Well, muddy by, I suppose, as horrible as that would be. But this isn't those things. This is just nineteen. I don't know how to make it work. I mean, you, you start doing things where you just say, okay, we'll put some parallel spaces on the side. I don't know if it's worth it for the. That also means U-turns have to be made at least, but at least the parallel spaces. I mean, that's parallel the. Parking sideways across there would. Only be required seven foot width. Still make crazy kinds of maneuvering to try to get out of it. If in fact, something else comes up, before I forget this last one thing, that your handicap spaces. I believe they do have to be the closest. To where it is you're servicing, which means the tenant spaces don't take priority. Tenant spaces would end up on. Either put them all on one side, but those handicap spaces need to be the closest. I'm not quite sure. Historic district and whatever else, what that means to put handicap spaces where they have to go down the driveway. To get to where they're going. I don't know what the regulation is there exactly. I have not kept up, but that one seems a little scary, but I probably would have overlooked that one. But no, the tenant spaces don't take priority over the handicap.
Typically, the, I believe the handicap that makes, should be closest to the building. But in this case, it's not, the building's not being served by, and that's what we placed the tenant spaces. You know, adjacent to the building, just because they, they, they access the building, but. You know, if, if it's, you know, we can always, those can be relocated. I mean, they're all, it's all the same number of spots, basically.
Yeah, I, I, I think that if you figure out a way around this, what I'm talking about here, those handicap spaces just need to be. To the closest to where they're going to be serving, which is probably. The pub across the street, which means also go back the in, the inbound one, by the way, then those people will use this too, so. That we're going, using both driveways. But that's just where they need to be. Small potatoes compared to the width problem, but if you fix it, then I'd say that's where that needs to be.
Anything else, so?
That's it for me.
All right, Barbara. Barbara, do you have any?
You're muted, Barbara.
Sign language?
Sorry about that. I keep muting and unmuting myself. The. Access to Mystic Pizza or wherever that side of. The parking lot, it seems to me that where that. Landscaped places, unless it is actually fenced off, that will become a de facto. Walkway to. The back, the back of the brewery and the back of Mystic Pizza. And I, I don't. I'm not aware of anything that would prevent that, and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I'm just saying. That. Whatever you plant there, it's going to be overrun by people walking through. Taking a shortcut to either the brewery or Mystic Pizza. They may be employees. I don't know, but whatever. The other thing is on the front of the building where we talked about the. Real serious sightline problem of getting a car getting out. I'm looking at the storage, there's stairs down to storage. I'm assuming. The storage is for the tenants of the two families. If that storage. Was somehow accessed in another way. I don't know where, because you don't seem to have any room. Or. I don't know, somehow blocked off and also the porch, which I would hate to see go. But that would make that space a whole lot wider. I don't know if that would help with the sightline or not. I, I don't. It's hard to visualize. But I'm wondering if, if that's a possibility.
I think the corner of the building is really what's, what's, you know, the obstruction there, the taking the, taking the porch off really. You know, it'll provide a better grass area, but it doesn't, you know, too far back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking it would be a wider area for a car to go through, and I don't know if that would help. With the sightline, it would, it would, the car would go a little farther north to get out.
Well, if it's tight, it, that people slow down. You know, if it's, they got more, just like if they widen the road, and people are always going faster with a tight situation, the people be. Exiting going slow, but again, you know, certainly, I mean, I think the only. Without putting signage up, it's, you know, taking a corner of that building off, but I don't, you know, if that's. Even feasible, you know, structural wise, but.
Third district commission approval to be able to do something with that again.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, we would have to go to the historic district commission. To be able to modify the building, the modifications that we made. Were in sort of a newer section of the house. So that corner is more of the older session, and I believe the historic district wanted to keep that more intact.
I believe there's a stairway down into the basement that makes. Also makes it impossible right in the front of the building. There's a stairway that goes down with stone edges. So that's actually more of the problem, is more the problem in the porch. It's not the porch that's stopping.
Right.
Turning building.
I'm, I'm just trying to see it a way of, out of that dilemma. I know I personally would. Hate. To exit that. Driveway. And I would look for driving because the last time we were in downtown Mystic, trying to go to a restaurant, we could not find parking and actually just went home.
In terms of, you know, the access point, I guess the only. Way to improve that width would be to, you know, keep parking on one side. You know, have a twenty-two foot wide or twenty, twenty-four foot wide. If there was a twenty-four foot width, that would leave thirteen feet on the south side. But again, we could maybe be able to put some, some part, some. Parking, you know, perpendicular with the rear property line, well, maybe two spaces there. And then possibly some, some parallel spaces, but. That's the only, you know, hate to. To reduce the number of spaces downtown. That could be available, but. You know, if it was limited to compact cars, that, that's what you said couldn't be enforced before you had a problem with that.
I think I've worked in a couple of other states and that was impossible, which is everybody gave.
Anything else, Barbara?
No, no, thank you.
All right, so.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, we were actually a Bank of America customer when we first moved here, two thousand and two, till they moved. So I was very familiar with that parking lot. And even with the rearview camera, it was never a favorite one, that's for sure, but I think the current configuration, everything. I just don't see that the design's going to work. I mean, listening to other comments too, but I, I agree, it just, it, it looks like it has major problems, and I think what's really a concern too. Is I think with those, you end up having significant safety issues for a lot of different reasons. So those are my comments. Thank you.
I guess I'm a little confused because this is an existing. Parking lot that is currently accessed through, through one driveway, right?
Not exactly.
That go in and out.
No, it's not.
Existing parking lot did not have, was not on the, the lot line. On the curb line. That was in the neighbor's lot.
Yeah, it used to be access in the bank, from the Bank of America area.
The existing driveway that's on Pearl Street right now. There is an existing driveway on Pearl Street.
Or the house.
There is, if I just this year.
There is on the north side of the building.
There, there's, can everybody see this?
I can see your site plan.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so there's an existing driveway here on the north side of the building, and this is all stamped concrete. Of parking area for the tenants. There is, there's basically just grass and retaining wall on this side now. And then there's a grass strip here.
You're not, you're not sharing.
Whatever you're doing, it's not coming across.
The proposed site plan right.
That was your anniversary, right, Bob?
What's that? I'm, I'm lost. Which one am I on?
You're on, you, you and Shari, your anniversary.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was our twenty-fifth in Hawaii. Okay, you can see that now? Existing conditions. Okay, so there's a driveway on the north side of the house and of the existing building. And this is all stamped concrete right here.
Right, and just, just for clarification, that was a, an entry and an exit.
For the house only.
That's correct.
And how many spots were back there?
I don't know, probably about four or five.
All right.
There's nothing on this side now, and then there's a grass strip here. And then there's a vitamis curb, and this was the, the parking. That came in from, from the southwestern corner here for the Bank of America. There's like a little island right here. If you remember that, but so these two are basically separate. There's a grass strip between them now, you know, and the tenants to pave that to. To combine them together, but our property line is, is this line here where the actual. Parking lot before extended over that property line, so we're, we're eliminated. We tend to eliminate this, this portion here, and that's what narrowed it down, and basically we have, you know, eighteen by eighteen plus eighteen plus nineteen, so it's. You know, fifty-five feet, basically.
And I heard something about. Difficult neighbors. That won't let you absorb that.
Well, I think the, did you say that, Deb?
Going back to Hal's comment about that, you know, the existing curb would have made the situation better.
And I'm not sure I called it difficult neighbors, but, but at this point, they don't have an agreement to, to. Share access and share parking.
Yeah, I know it's, you know, it's a bad situation, but you know, they. They're currently accessing Pearl Street right now through a, you know, a tiny little driveway. It is, it is only a handful of parking spaces. But have there ever been any issues with that? Have we ever had an accident or anybody get hit or anything that?
I don't have a traffic, I don't have a report from the police station.
Police report.
Well, I think the visibility is better on that end.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least in one direction.
It's really like a double driveway.
Yeah, not necessarily for the driveway to the neighbor to the north of, but he's sort of in a similar situation that, that we're proposing where he's. Coming out of the driveway, the building's, you know, just on the back of the sidewalk.
That only had maybe three cars coming in. I don't even know how cars, what they do when they.
And they didn't want the, the entrance to be on the south side because of, it would stack up traffic onto Route One.
That's right.
Yeah, that was a concern.
Collateral intersection.
It's gonna be a popular place, I guess. Yeah. Um, and you, you said something about the fence, the fence is not owned by you at all?
Yeah, that, this, uh, our property line is the dark black line here. The asphalt pavement and the curbing extend over that property line. And then this is the chain link fence, the, the line with the circles. So that sort of straddles the property line in this area, but then it lines up with, uh, you know, onto, uh, this be, B A B twenty-six realty's property.
Yeah, cuz you're kind of limited on how far overhand you got if you got a chain link fence in front of you. Yeah, um.
Yeah, I mean, if, the way, the way we'd looked at it, uh, let me see if I can. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we, we position these three feet back, uh, you know, based on, you know, regular vehicle where they can pull in and their, their front hood. You know, and their, uh, front fenders extend and so they can butt the, uh, you know, the curb. But if you're talking about a van or, you know, uh, you know, then it's a little bit narrower. Um, you know, the front end of the car from the, from the front of the wheel to the, to the front end of the cars is, I think, you referred to Mr. Zod, uh, Odyssey, I think that's a, it's probably the, the alignment is a little bit less, but I mean, if you're, we're talking of, you know, a, a typical SUV or another car sedan, I would think that, you know, the three D feet that we provided would, would be able to make it. You know, the, I'm looking at the, uh, the turning radius for a, um, the inside turning radius for a passenger car. And if, if typically, I don't know if I can put this on the screen here. Uh, but they, let me see, can I, maybe I can hold it up to my, uh. No, I guess I can't. Oh, if I, if I stop here. A turning radius. A turning radius for a passenger car and the minimum inside radius is thirteen. Don't have that in my, on, on my files here that I can share anywhere, but, um. So, you know, if they're, they're on the other side, again, it is gonna be tight and backing up if you're in a large truck, there, there could be potential problems, but if we can, um, you know, with signage just limited to compact cars, um, I think, you know, the twenty-seven spaces would work, uh, as opposed to, you know, having, uh, let's see, fourteen on this side, you know, some parallel spaces where they, they'd actually have to, to back out in order to, to make the turn. And maybe a couple of spaces on the end if we lose. Well, probably not gonna, yeah, I mean, it's, it's really gonna be cutting this, the number of spaces in half to, to make them all, make it twenty-four foot width in a, in an eighteen foot long space.
And what if the applicant were to, um, dictate, you know, who was going to be parking there as opposed to a public parking area? Would that make a difference with the, um, commission?
I guess.
The right car.
Keep the cars smaller.
Well, smaller and you'd have less frequency, so your sight line probably wouldn't be of concern if you rented it out to people that were working in Mystic versus open to the public.
Is the applicant here, does the applicant want to talk about that at all? But I saw, um, Deb that he might be here.
So I, I quoted something Maggie May Roach, assuming that that was, that was him. Um, I don't know. I don't know if he's pending under a different name.
Do we, do we have a time limit for this decision, Deb?
You have plenty of time. I mean, it, it's certainly possible that.
What it, what it might make sense is after we get all the questions out there is to postpone the, the, uh, final decision and let the applicant come up with answers rather than trying to answer off the cuff tonight.
Absolutely. I was gonna suggest that when we're through with all your comments.
All of these things are tough questions, but one of them might be like, that was suggested was to not have it open to the public, which would mean you'd only have cars going in and out once a day versus once an hour. That's where you get into the problem, I think, is having a one that's frequently transient. Because it screws up how you go in and out of the, the, the site. And also your traffic situation. You wouldn't be having people leave or very, leave at busy times. But, um, I think we should go through and get everybody's questions out on the table first. And then postpone the decision to next time.
Yeah, just to finish up, Mr. Chairman, I, I.
Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
I had, um, a similar question on the handicap spots because, you know, normally if it's for residents, you know, you wouldn't require it. If it's a retail establishment, you, you know, could require it. But this seems to be a hybrid and I don't know where that falls legally. So I was just, you know, but if you, if you don't need the handicap spots, then I was thinking, you know, you can make spots slightly wider and that would help you with turning, you know, that, that might ease the situation or lose one spot along the way.
Why wouldn't you need handicap spots?
Well, I mean, if it's a, if it's not a retail establishment, um.
It's not open to the public.
If it's not open to the public.
Right, and originally, that's the way we submitted it without handicap because the tenants, uh, for a two-family uh, building, they're not required. If you have anything over two units, you have to have one of them handicapped with handicap accessibility. So there was no handicap requirement for the existing residents. And originally, our original submission was, you know, just parking space and, you know, no, you know, un, no handicapped parking spaces, but I believe that the, the comment came from the the building official, was it, that required?
Yes, beingless. That's great. That's correct.
Yeah. And so, uh, and that's why, you know, we provided them.
Okay, all right, that's all the comments, my questions I had.
Kevin?
Um, sure. Are, are there any proposed electronic gates on this at all? Or electronics such as you have twenty-seven spots and you say they're all full or, you know, twenty-four of what we have three left? Anything like that at all?
No, um, the applicant asked, uh, you know, originally we had the kiosk over here.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, with the idea that, you know, people come in, park, go up to the window, similar to, you know, they do, um, in many places where you just, you park and you go over, you type in your, your license plate and then you get a little ticket. Um, that was the idea, uh, that what we thought here. And again, he put as a future because he's not sure if he's, if he wants to do it that way, or if he can, you know, use it for, you know, employee parking for downtown businesses or, or something, or maybe a specific, uh, business, um, you know, for employees or something like that. So, but what we wanted to do is at least show a building, uh, you know, a kiosk, uh, type of, of building that uh, so later on, if he did decide to do that, but there was no gate discussed, um.
And the only reason I asked about gate was, you know, sometimes my belief is, having worked in a lot of cities, the gates seem to slow down the exit, um, a great deal. And therefore, if they have to actually punch in that code as they leave or whatever, it seems to that that potentially could um, at least minimize, um, the potential sidewalk issue, but we can need to talk that through. Um, and then, um, that being the biggest cheerleader of, of, of Mystic, as far as parking is concerned, I just wanted to say that, um, everyone, I think, on the board here and the commission is very interested in, um, in this proposal because you add parking spots. But it does appear is it may need a little bit more finesse so that, I'm not sure it's, it's parallel spots on one side that will do it. But potentially, I think you may have a solution here, but I'm not sure it, it fits the applicant's business model. But, um, wherever, wherever we end up tonight, um, I would advocate that, um, hopefully there can be some finesse put into this because we, um, all of us would appreciate if we, we find, um, workable solution here. That's all. That's all, Jeff.
Okay.
Amen.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could just send my nickel back for one. Um, leveraging off what you said, Kevin, the, the, the thing that I would like to avoid, if we could somehow, is having somebody drive in the driveway just to find out that the lot is full because that would again lead to one more car coming out if it does turn out to be a public parking lot.
That's right, exactly, Steve.
Yeah, so I, I see where you're going with that.
And probably having to back out the whole way.
Well, you, you can probably just drive right around, right?
Yeah, you could drive around, but you're not gonna know that it's full until you.
Yeah, so.
That's what that crosshatch.
Small sign that says lot full, small sign.
That's why, that's why almost an assigned number space and dedicated, you know, assigned, you know, parkies, sort of, sort of speak would be preferable because then everybody knows where they gotta park. You know, their spacing could be taken, I'm just sort of throwing that out there. It's a, that was a potential idea that we can work on.
Yeah, you could rent, you could lease these places out, long-term leasing. Might be an alternative.
The side wouldn't be a parking sign, the sign would be the opposite, would be.
Private parking only.
Parking only. Trespassers will be towed as, as awful as possible, if you can make it, that would be the only thing that would slow this down. But otherwise, as I mentioned, if people make it in there, even if they say, okay, there's no spots, then they'll circle around and we're back to our, when it's heavy, there'll be a lot of traffic kind of zipping around there, finding that there's no space.
But if it's leased, then you wouldn't only need one drive to, you would need to have two ways.
That would just.
No, I don't think so.
No.
Why, if you, hmm?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so either, not just one twelve-foot wide drive.
No.
No.
May I ask a question of the commission? Um, if we were to, um, use smaller, you know, sized cars as far as length and width, um, would that make a difference with the nineteen-foot aisle width that we're depicting if that were, um, one of, one of the considerations that we took into account? Would you feel, especially you, Mr. Zod, would you feel differently about it at that point if we were to, you know, use smaller vehicles and then say have it be just designated parking for leased parking or however you want to describe it for particular cars?
If, if in a perfect world, I'd say, sure, just making sure it's all compact and subcompact cars. Unfortunately, I absolutely know, no way to, I can't imagine policing it. That we have some organization that's, or some administration that's only going to permit certain cars to come in and come out. I, I don't know how it's done.
No, it's just not feasible.
Yeah.
But if they were private leases, I'm saying.
There would be a private lease for the individual cars, and that's not the way these leases will work. These leases want to work for the individual stores.
No.
Not necessarily.
So you think it would actually be leased to the individual cars?
You know, yeah, I, actually, that's, that's one thing that those who are gonna attend the Mystic, um, parking presentation on Thursday will hear, that is something that, um, the traffic, that the transportation consultant said works well in other towns is that you do it by the license plate and you register it by the license plate.
And so somehow you have a license, a, a, a length of vehicle associated with the license plate.
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I, you would know which cars are allowed to park in this, in these stalls. Um, they would be assigned, you know, stall number one, two, or three. Um, the owner would have, um, a contract with different employers and the employers would assign whichever employees he's going to place in this lot.
Yeah.
But you'd have some, some.
Yeah, I, I get that, that makes, that makes sense, the, the individuals, because I, I've seen that too, where it's actually a license plate that's the, the sign at the end of the post of the space. And I, I kind of liked that when it was mine, that, that makes sense. But then it's, you're back to the employer, the, each of the different employers is going to have to monitor how long each one of these cars is in order for it to be effective.
The user will.
That's not gonna work.
The user will decide whether he can park in there or not, is how it works. Because where, where I go skiing, they allow parking like this. And then people park in the middle between the two rows. And, and you cannot, in a row, space backing out is less than a car length. I've got those.
Those fourteen-point turns.
You have to make a lot of turns, but if you have a wider space, you can back out in a distance shorter than the, or less than what the car length is. But I have to use my parking sensors front and back to do that because I can't see, see that closely. But if you lease the places out to P individuals, they're gonna monitor the fact I can park my car in there and get in and out, or it's too big and I'm not gonna lease it.
Well, when we, when we allow somebody to have, you know, some other program, they don't have the onsite parking, so they say, it's fine, I'm leasing some extra spaces. And we're going to assume, we'll say, fine, where are you leasing spaces? And they'll say, here, wherever. We, we're kind of assuming that when someone says they're leasing spaces, that they're a decent standard space. They aren't the back half of somebody's garage. Corner of a lot, they're assume, we're assuming that it's a nine by eighteen decent-sized aisle that's a regular parking space that these people are leasing.
They're not, they're not, they're leasing them to an individual as opposed to a business as a group. You're gonna lease spot A is what you're leasing. You're renting it out as opposed to renting a space in a parking lot.
And so we're gonna ask the owner to only lease once he's determined.
No, he doesn't care. He just. At least it's the person doing the leasing is gonna care. Is paying.
So we're asking the leaser, the people who are doing the leasing to get some confirmation that the cars are under fifteen feet.
No, just let the person that's gonna lease it worry about.
Well, he won't worry about it. He'll think.
Apartment, if you, if it's too small, you're not gonna go to rent it.
Well, he can, and then the guy behind him can't. That's the problem is that one or two or three cars in here that are eighteen feet long would probably be fine. I don't know, it actually would be, you can, you can maneuver. If everybody else is small, and then you get to the fifth car that's too big.
Well, you need more. Enough width on the parking spot too. To move it, maneuver it, and you start turning before you back out.
Right, these are nine feet.
You can back out in a shorter distance than what your car is in length.
Sort of reminds me of what I'm gonna be going through when we go back, uh, to work, uh, after this COVID, where, um, we're gonna be working downtown. And, uh, the employees are required to get a parking permit at, uh, one of the garages. And so I have four different choices. And I give the license plate of, um, you know, my, my own license plate or anybody else I, that I want to be able to have a permit to park there, like, you know, my daughter or, or something like that. And there's, there's certain license plates that are permitted uh, for that leasing, uh, space that I rent out, that I'm gonna have to rent out for a month. For that leasing space that I rent out, that I'm gonna have to rent out for a month, you know, a month at a time. And I just, I haven't done it yet because we're not going back until June seventh. But it's almost similar to that. I mean, if the owners of businesses downtown know. You know, they go, they work there every day, whether they're, you know, retail or bartenders or whatever. They have a they have a dedicated spot where they know that they're gonna have, you know, that that may that may fit. Fit in a niche that, you know, is gonna be available spaces for someone else, a tourist or, you know.
Well, I don't think we're gonna solve this tonight, but. But I I have a concern on Pearl Street. Right now, where you're allowing people to have dining outside the the Harp and Hound. Place and they put up Jersey barriers, which really narrows the available width of Pearl Street to get in and out of this place.
Be going away pretty soon.
I don't know if that has to go away to make this realistic.
So it's, it will remain till March of twenty twenty two. By the state legislature, it extended the on the street dining and sidewalk dining and parking lot dining until then.
Well, when when I drove down the street this afternoon to look at this place. I noticed that it it's awful tight to get in and would be very tight to make a turn. Left turn to get in and out of this driveway because the street is so narrow because of that. Because the Jersey barriers take up quite a bit of space. And you probably don't want to have people sitting out in the road. Without something sturdy. But I don't know if anybody took a look at that or not. Because it's a pretty narrow street to begin with. I'd like to do is 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 let the applicant go take our concerns and come up with responses to them. And continue this application till our next meeting.
We will do that. Thank you for your comments.
Be here all night and not.
And we'll, we'll try to, you know, come up with some reasonable expectations. Bob can look at their turning radiuses for smaller cars and. Work on that. And then we can also talk about the.
You know, what the use is, whether it's open to the public or.
Yes, exactly.
That might be a solution, because I would think there'd be demand for long term leasing. Maybe wrong, but. But you might have it for people that that guarantee be guaranteed a parking place might figure it's working.
I know if I was had a business downtown, I would definitely love to have a parking lot. To be able to park into to allow more on-street parking for. Shoppers and people visiting. You know, even like when we've gone, you know, we either park on this on this main street or we park on. We parked on Pearl Street way down. And just walked a long way in, which is great for us, you know, because we're good walkers. But if you're not a good walker, like I believe Ms. Tarbach said that she just left. Because there was no parking space. And that's pretty frustrating when you're trying to, you know, create a good business environment. For the shops that are downtown and the restaurants. So we'll definitely work on, you know, addressing your comments and. And hopefully we can come up with some kind of great solution that we can present next time.
Because we need the parking spaces.
Because we do need the parking spaces. We, everybody loves mystics. We want to make it work.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, when is the next meeting, Deb?
Our next meeting is June eighth.
Yes. Okay, all right, that's correct, great. And then there's another one two weeks later in June, if that doesn't work. Okay, I guess we're all set for tonight then. Can you stop your chair, Bob? Can I what? Oh, stop my share. Okay. I thought you said something about my chair. Thought I was squeaking. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we move on to old business, Steenberg email on the sidewalk agreement for pressure precious memories.
So in your packet, we included a site map of the area. As well as the sidewalk agreement, your motion from the two thousand and nineteen approval. And I think we gave you another copy of of the email. At the last meeting, you had, I I noted that the state was looking at those intersections. With and that included this particular sidewalk from Allen Street to the driveway of precious memories. As well as a sidewalk on the other side of Allen Street in front of the Mystic River ambulance. And you had asked when that construction might take place. My notes from our initial meeting with DOT say three to four years. So as you can see from the sidewalk agreement. If if it's determined that things have changed, you can ask the owner to come before you and and discuss. Whether or not the circumstances have changed and and if you all agree that they that it has, you can have them install the sidewalk.
Well, shouldn't we have them come come forth?
I mean, your your choices are, well, you know, things haven't changed or the state is going to do it in a couple of years. So there's no need to bring them in. Or if you think you would like to have precious memories, do the installation sooner than that. And yeah, and you do need to have them come to a meeting to discuss it.
I don't think it's going to be a couple of years. If they're saying three to four, figure five. I'd rather see it this year than five years from now.
Or it might be never. What's the feeling on the commission?
Yeah, I think invite them in.
Invite them in.
Okay, very good.
All right, the next item is the complete streets draft policy. It was a carryover from. Our last meeting.
And in your packet is the the draft that the manager's office prepared for review for the council. As well as some samples from other sections of state of complete streets policies. So the council is looking for your input to the draft. Is there, are there any other items you would like to see in a complete streets policy? I don't think they want you to craft the language, but if there are items you would like to see in a policy. We can we can send that on to the manager's office and the council.
What I I'd like to see is some some action. So just putting out a policy like this. File it away. I think we want to have somebody directed or some group directed to come up with a. Overall transportation policy to implement the opens. Streets policy and also have it identified in our road standards. As a policy, is what my thoughts are.
So some items in the other examples that were in your packet. That other towns have included that are not in our policy here, this draft. Are, you know, having a complete streets manual, having a complete streets plan, designating. Someone to review proposals for streets to make sure it complies with the policy. Identifying priority areas in town where you want to see complete streets installed first. What else? And also addressing state roads, recommendations for state roads.
Which is really an implementation. Implementation is what we need to. But maybe that's all we need to say, or I don't know, the other people have thoughts on this. I was hoping we'd have other input.
I think for me, it's sort of hard to to understand how it would be implemented. And I think all of those things that you mentioned, Deb, seem like.
Examples.
They would be helpful. You know, for me, I I think that a handbook, having someone who is, you know, a point person who reviews these things to make sure that they're. Being being, you know, that they're being put in the appropriate place.
Do we need a person or is it just something that's part of planning's, the staff's job? I mean, it's. Any other policy? I don't think we need to have a person who does it, in fact.
The function, yeah.
I generally don't like it when it's a person, because what happens when that person's on vacation? So I like it when it's the staff.
Or 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 department. I mean, perhaps. But but at least designate something, somebody needs to review it.
Designate a function, well, yeah, function.
Have worked. We are to be part of the review process.
Okay.
But but the overall transportation plan, because we may not be able to have a complete street. You may have to have some other way of getting the, say, the bike traffic or pedestrian traffic. Around other than on the highway. Or road. That's why it should be a plan.
Yeah, I think I think the idea is when public works is, you know, repaving a street to look to a plan or the policy. To see if there's any way to include complete.
That could be part of the road, I think, the road policy that we have. It should be added to our road standard.
Road standards, right. And so when you have a new subdivision that poses a new road, you'd look to it as well.
Or, yeah, or refer or a complete overhaul, yes.
Yep.
But it would be good to have a, also, should it be part of a, like a trails plan? You know, a transportation, overall transportation plan for for non-motorized. Transportation.
Right. I guess one thing on that, though, the non-motorized, when bikes and so many other things are becoming electric.
Oh, I wasn't, yeah, I was hesitated to use that term because electric bikes would fall into that.
I know. I think I think it may be for, there might be a better solution coming up in the short term. Self-driving electric vehicles for the elderly or whatever, there's.
They have these little miniature motorcycles that aren't licensed. I don't know. Well, they should be included.
Exactly.
And that they should be off the highway.
Right.
So it's really using motorized isn't a good.
Another term.
Another term, yes. Something other than.
And I think you've got the audience that talks about really has a lot of different needs. And you don't want this to become a telephone book, you know, policies and stuff, but. There's a, there's a lot to gain this right, I think. I mean, more than two pages of a policy, so. All right, so I'm hearing recommendations to develop some sort of manual or 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 standards. That probably should be referenced by this policy. And there should also be some mention of who who reviews these plans or who enforces this policy.
Somebody has to be in charge.
Any other suggestions?
It might, it might be helpful if we, if we had something similar to, you know, how we have like the sidewalk plan or open space. Plan or whatever else it is, is to have some sort of a document that we could reference. That prioritizes, you know, nodes or areas of town that would benefit from this the most.
Okay. Develop some sort of priority.
And and mostly even how you like, and it would have to be. Able to connect housing with employment and shopping. So that you would have, it's not so much maybe nodes, but that these, you know, how you make those connections. And where are the best places for these kinds of things would be? I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud.
I just wondered if there's some way to just make sure it doesn't look like it's a separate thing from other intramodal. Non-car.
Well, you could put it on your trail, expand the trails.
Well, I guess both as trails, just because that's, they mesh together completely, you know.
Well, you have sidewalks and sidewalk plans.
Block by block, it can be, hey, here, we can do it on the street. That makes it a complete street. Here we can, for some reason, that makes it a trail. So it should, they should be just a smooth transition from one to the other.
I I think I'd mentioned that's that's actually what Parks and Rec is is going to do initially. They were just going to update the bike and ped plan that they have. But they've expanded the idea to a community connectivity plan. That's what they're, that's what they're gonna call it.
Thank you, Deb.
Connect, you know, roads to trails to multi-use paths to.
That should be in this policy.
Yep, yep.
That's what we're really looking for.
Okay. Okay, I think I've got enough to just give some bullet points to the council.
That sounds good.
But but in general, you're in favor of having a complete street policy with some, okay, all right.
But I think what Parks and Rec is working on is important. Because you gotta have an implementation, not just a policy. There's no implementation. And moving on to new business, new applications.
Right, a couple of new applications, an apartment building on Long Hill Road in between Hampton Inn and Applebee's. Just came in. And then the zoning text amendments you've been working on.
So what what's the next step on the text amendments? Do they come back?
We actually created a formal application. So there's an application number now. And we're, we'd like you to set the public hearing date for July thirteenth. Is that right, Deb?
That's right, thirteenth.
So if we can set the public hearing date, we can send out all the referrals and everything. The other thing we're going to do is print out copies for you so that it's easier for you to look at the list. And then the corresponding text. So you have that in front of you. I was gonna hand it out tonight, but then I realized we were still on Zoom, so. But we'll be able to, we'll let you know when the text is available. We, if you don't want to pick it up, we can mail it to you, but potentially.
Do we have to take any action or does it just go automatically to public hearing?
Now, we'll set the public hearing for the thirteenth unless there's any issue with that.
Yeah, and we'll and we'll do all the the mandatory referrals and all of that.
So you you could have delivered our copies with our slice of pizza to me.
And make sure that perhaps the participants. Probably already know this, but make sure that, I, well, I don't know how you make sure. That this is nothing to do with the mystic education. That this has nothing to do with the Mystic Education Center.
Right, right.
Yeah, we'll make that clear.
Yeah. Any other thing, anything else under? New applications?
Yeah.
Referrals.
We have the.
CBA Cutler Elementary School.
Right, there's the. Variance request for the Cutler Elementary School sign. Again, they they're proposing something that's pretty much similar to what you approved on the. The middle school site. And they're asking for two variances to allow thirty three three square feet. Of signage where twenty four, twenty four square feet is allowed and to allow three display colors where two are permitted. So I don't know if you all had a chance to look at the packet and the design of the sign. I can put it up if you want to, otherwise. If you have any comments.
How does this compare to the middle schools?
It's pretty similar, it's got the brick, brick base.
Waivers are asked for the.
They're asking for less variances with this one.
Got it, they, they gave up on the three colors for that sign. For the middle school, didn't they, and said they were just gonna go to two? Eyes, size of the sign itself.
I don't know, I thought they did do the colors too.
They asked for it, I thought Rick Morris. But the variances are similar to what they asked for before.
Yes, um, the sign is, the sign design is similar also for what what you actually approved.
Right.
It's the brick base and the actual name of the. The school on the top area.
So anybody have any concern with the? CBA reform?
I I was gonna look up what we approved last time, I just didn't, you say it's kind of similar. Isn't it identical, I mean, what's the difference?
Looks identical to me.
Looks identical to my, for my memory, I just don't remember.
The size is a little different, but it's pretty, the design is the same, yes.
Okay, so where there's metal, where there's brick, where there's concrete, that's all used about the same.
Right.
So are we not using the terms elementary school anymore, if they're all just gonna be called magnet schools, because they're all magnet schools, you know?
I guess all the elementary schools are magnet schools, so.
So we have the term high school, we have the term middle school, but we don't have the term elementary school anymore. That part is strange, that's one, that's one reason, bring up.
I thought that's what the school system had done.
But that's the plan. I'm okay.
So we have no comment on that on this?
Yep, I I my only comment is I don't know how, what the hardship is, says that it's gotta match the other signs, I don't know how that. Is necessary, but. I don't know, didn't seem like much of a hardship to me. But that's their hardship, I guess.
Yes, yeah, personally, I I would have no problem with this.
I still don't like the flashing signs, especially in a.
If it was the exact same design and scaled down by some percentage, it would still be the exact design and we probably wouldn't have even noticed. One less brick high and a couple inches off either way. So I I I also don't see the necessity of it, but then again, that. It's a shot in the size of a sheet of plywood up there on base, so it's. For something out on the street side, it's really not monstrous.
All right, so we'll go with no comment then.
No comment.
All right. And then, uh, collection reports, reported chair. We have a mystic parking presentation on Thursday, right, twenty seven? This week. And we have two workshops for the MAC. It sounds like we have enough people for. June fourteenth and seventeenth, is that what we have, Deb?
That that's right, we have, that those are the two dates where we have the most folks who can attend. Just want to reserve two dates in case we need them.
And Jeff, can I ask a question? So those are, those workshops are, do you do not have public comment, is that correct?
That that is correct, this is meant for you to work with staff to finalize. Hopefully.
Well, we want to establish, well, what we.
Absolutely.
The restrictions on the.
Right.
Words, but. Things like density, building height, those type of issues.
Right.
So so I'll just ask the question, and you may not know this, Deb, does, do you, does anyone at staff have any idea? Whether the town council or the town in any manner is gonna be opening up any workshops and or public hearings. Prior to June fourteenth or June seventeenth or shortly thereafter to hear from the citizens directly?
No, I don't believe there are any meetings scheduled for that.
Well, we're getting all the input from the citizens.
We are, we are, and again, I'm energized by it, but I'm of course frustrated because we don't have the answers at this time.
Well, we're making the answers.
Understand that, yeah, right.
And and the count, to be fair, the council is is hearing from these folks as well. They take public comment only at council meetings, not at committee of the whole meetings. But I understand they're also getting, they're also getting emails and letters and and a good deal of public input.
Great, thank you very much.
If I may just say one thing to Jeff. I think, given the importance of this workshop. And the fact that we all know there have been so many negative comments as particularly about the lack of transparency and other things. It would be, this may be the plan, it would be extremely helpful. If we could get the materials a week in advance, so we have time to really read them and consider them. And I would also ask that the public would have availability, of course, to the same materials at the same time. Because it's, I think, I'm. It it's very complex, even in, in the know of itself. But there's a lot of material, I mean, I've been taking copious notes on almost everything, but I need to, you know. Think about these, refresh my memory about things, read some long reports, again, et cetera, so. I would ask if we could have at least a week in advance, if the meeting is a June fourteenth, a week ahead of that. So we can get all the materials and have time to look at them.
Or I I don't. In another draft of a regulation or a text, but. We we haven't formulated what exactly we're going to send out yet, but if we're sending out, you know, a memo with. Some direction and and the input we hope you get from you all, then we will, we'll get all that material to you a week ahead.
I I would ask, regardless of what it is, I would really appreciate it early because we are getting lots of negative feedback. I think every one of us, so. It will be, I mean, there's no reason, I think, not to try to go overboard on this. Be really helpful.
Yeah, but i- if we feel uncomfortable. In in two sessions, we'll have another session, I don't think. You don't want to rush this through. And it, and I think it's more than just reviewing specifications of somebody else's development. What our thoughts are on the major issues. Are, in how they should be handled first, and then you can go down to more of the details. It's not like writing, looking at a regulation, not what we've seen before.
No, I agree a hundred percent, like our first meeting.
You know, no input maybe, or thinking outside the box, we don't want to be too constrained. Get in trouble, we think, yeah, to that.
Well, definitely.
I indicated that I I anticipate being unavailable for those meetings, I'm going to be out of town. But I am hoping if all goes well, that I can. Attend somehow, I just can't, I just don't know where I'm going to be and what the.
You have internet.
I don't know, I should have internet, but I don't know. So I I can't, I can't say that I am definitely going to be there. But I will, if I can't, I will listen to the to the recording afterwards.
Yeah. Or if you can, if you aren't and have some specific thoughts, let us know. It doesn't have to be too formal, just so we make sure we can discuss those issues or.
Right.
It's not like we're gonna approve something in, install. And the last item I had was that. Our ex-planning commissioner, Dick Fitzgerald, I guess is winning out on his battles with the town council on. Signage for X. Coastal access. And it appears that the council is going to appropriate forty thousand dollars for replacing coastal access signs. Of course, he has to have a comment on top of that, if he's concerned that. They're gonna be too fancy and not enough signs will be put up. But he, he keeps after that.
Um, in, we sort of responding to that, there was a survey. I think it was on Facebook today. And I responded to it, and afterwards I thought, well, I don't know if I should ever not. But. I don't know where else this survey is going to go, it's about the coastal access signs.
Well, I I'm not rece- I'm receiving this because he sends it to. The town clerk and the town clerk is puts me on.
I'm saying that it was an official survey from the town of Broughton.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
But I mean, this isn't something that's requires our actions, it's for information that he thinks.
No, I'm I'm just saying, for for information, I did participate in that survey.
All right, report a commission, does anyone on the commission have anything they want to bring up?
Yes.
You must.
Like.
Like.
I. Let Tom Zanarini know of another situation. On Sandy Hollow Road, and he did respond that he'd received a complaint about the situation, so. In furtherance of trying to neaten up our town. That that is also in the works, I am, I guess disappointed at the. Procedure, the, all all of the things that have to be gone through to get something done. And I wish things could happen faster than they are. I understand the the hope, the property owners, sometimes dilemmas. Uh, and and their problems with cleaning up their property. But it's, it's a little frustrating. Particularly since all of the situations that I've mentioned. Uh, to the zoning enforcement officer have apparently been going on for years. And like, why hasn't something been done before now? Thank you very much.
Speaking of things done, Deb, could we get an update on Godfrey Street?
Oh, sure.
It looks like they've gotten a lot of it done, but it may not, doesn't look complete.
Yeah, I I I know, I personally haven't been by there in a while, sure.
It's, it looks pretty ragged, they finally cut the grass, which looked horrible. It was, it was really disgraceful how long the grass had had been, but I was just there. By there the other day and they finally cut it, it's.
It looks like the site work isn't complete, or whatever they're doing in the, the main building looks like it's done, but the.
Yeah.
The rest of it looks, I don't know if, how close they are to.
And the art show sign is still on Route one. I don't know why, it's still there.
With an arrow that points up the driveway.
Right.
Does anyone have any?
I'd like to go around town with pickup truck and throw all the illegal signs in it.
Any other items from the commission, not reporter staff?
I don't have anything, Diane, do you? Nope, none.
Okay, so I'll make, no one has anything else, I'll make a motion for adjournment, sir, second? Adjourn at nine twenty eight, and our next meeting is June eighth.
Thank you all.
Hi, hi, Kevin.